Roll call.
Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jaram. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Here. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation today by Councilmember Chris Jaram.
A pledge of allegiance should apply of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just thought as the season's definitely changing, the temperatures are getting cooler, that we remember the people in our community who have issues being able to make their payments for their gas bill and their power bill. And there's an opportunity for those of us who do get those statements to check an extra contribution to your payment to the utilities to help those who are less fortunate. Hopefully, we can all keep that in mind and for those of us that have the ability to add a little something to help those in need that we consider doing that now that it's getting cold out.
Thank you.
Have that too.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting and a current copy of the open meeting act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this, welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. The council thanks you for being with us today. As a courtesy to those in attendance, we would ask you to turn off or mute any of your electronic devices. Madam Clerk.
Item six, an ordinance authorizing and providing for an issue of special obligation refunding bonds in aggregate principal amount if not to exceed $5,500,000 for special obligation refunding bonds. The Riverfront Redevelopment Project Series 2017-D is amendment of the whole requested by the Finance Department.
Voters today. Is there motion? Moved and seconded to approve the amendment, amendment of the whole?
Yes.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to move the, to move the amendment of the whole. There are no lights. Roll call.
Palermo. Festerson.
Yes.
Harding. Jaram.
Yes.
Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six, amended in the whole is approved, seven to zero. Item seven, an ordinance authorizing and providing for an issue of special tax revenue redevelopment refunding bonds, an issue of special tax revenue redevelopment crossover refunding bonds, and an issue of special tax revenue redevelopment bonds in the aggregate principal amount if not to exceed $14 million for special tax revenue redevelopment refunding bonds, series 2017-A, special tax revenue redevelopment crossover refunding bonds, series 2017-B, and special tax revenue redevelopment bonds taxable series 2017-C, is amendment of the whole requested by the Finance Department.
Public hearing was on October 17th. Today's the vote. Is there a motion? Roll call.
Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jaram. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item seven amended in the whole is approved, seven to zero. Item eight, a resolution to approve the preliminary official statement and bond purchase agreement pertaining to the issuance and sale of bonds titled special tax revenue redevelopment refunding bonds, series 2017-A, special tax revenue redevelopment crossover refunding bonds, series 2017-B, special tax revenue redevelopment bonds, series 2017-C, and special obligation refunding bonds, Riverfront Redevelopment Project, series 2017-D.
Public hearing on agenda item number eight is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item eight. No lights. Roll call.
Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jaram. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item eight is approved, seven to zero. Item nine, an application to consider a class C liquor license for Crossbones LLC, doing business as Crossbones Bar, 5611 South 36th Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number nine is today. Proponents, please. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon.
Name and address for the record, please.
Michael Kratkey, K-R-A-T-K-Y, 8080 Seymour Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68127.
Thank you. And just answering any questions on your club that we might have?
What's that now?
Are you going to answer, just take, are you here to just answer any questions we might have?
Yes, yes.
All right, thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item nine. Roll call.
Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jaram. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item nine is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Item 10, an application to consider a class C liquor license for Red Lion Lounge LLC, doing business as Red Lion Lounge, 3804 Farnham Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 10 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Sean Kelly. 2804 South 87th Avenue. Here on behalf of the applicant to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jaram. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 10 is approved, seven to zero. Item 11, an application to consider a class I liquor license for Kitchen Table LLC, doing business as Kitchen Table, 4952 Dodge Street, is communication and support.
Public hearing on agenda item number 11 is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Sean Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue. Here for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. Kelly, are you here for, on behalf of the owners or the owners here too?
I am, and they are present here as well.
Okay. Sure. What I wanted to say is just that both Councilman Harding and I had lunch at Kitchen Table this, this afternoon and I think are both very impressed with the operation they run. But I'm very much looking forward to this application, which is to be within the Dundee Theater renovation, and I wanted to give them a chance to talk about that expansion and what they're doing there if they had, if they wanted to come have the opportunity.
Sure.
I'm sure lunch was great this afternoon. So, one of the things I'm interested in is when will it open? I think it's November, is it when, when the renovations are complete, right?
Yeah, they just mentioned early November is when it should be completed and hope to be opened soon after that.
Great. That'd be, sounds like right when it, the renovations will be complete. So if you want to expand upon that, go ahead.
Yeah, we're, oh, sorry. Colin Duggan, 1411 Farnham, apartment number three. And this is my wife Jessica Duggan, 1411 Farnham, apartment number three. The delivery date is set for November 1st, and we are, still have an outside chance of the day before Thanksgiving for an opening date, but we're looking more likely to be December 1 for opening.
Great. And similar offerings as the restaurant downtown?
Very similar. We won't have as many specials and as many moving pieces as we do downtown, at least initially. We plan to start a little smaller and kind of grow into the space a little bit, but the core menu will be the same.
And eat-in and take-out for the neighborhood, surrounding neighborhood, right?
Yep.
That's great. We look forward to having you there.
We look forward to being there.
All right. Motion approved.
Moved and seconded to approve item 11. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jaram. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President. Item 11 is approved, seven to zero. Item 12, an application to consider a class D liquor license for Aldi Inc., Kansas, doing business as Aldi Number 48885, South 72nd Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 12 is today. Proponents, please.
Sean Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue. Here for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponent, is there proponent? Oh. Opponents wish to be heard? Public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item 12. There are no lights. Roll call.
Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jaram. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President. Item 12 is approved, seven to zero. Item 13, an application to consider a special designated liquor license for Affairs Remembered Inc., doing business as Catering Creations, 1915 Jackson Street, for an outdoor reception at Founder's 19, located at 1915 Jackson Street on November 10th, 2017, from 6:00 p.m. to midnight with music until midnight.
Public hearing on agenda item number 13 is today. Proponents, please.
Jennifer Snow, 12022 Douglas Circle, Omaha, Nebraska, 68154, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item 13. No lights. Roll call.
Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jaram. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President. Item 13 is approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearing on agenda items numbers 14 through 19 were held on October 17th, 2017. Moved and seconded to approve. There are no lights. Roll call.
Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jaram. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President. Items 14 through 19 are approved, seven to zero.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 20 through 25 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve. There are no lights. Roll call.
Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jaram. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President. Items 20 through 25 are approved, seven to zero. Item 26, an ordinance to amend Omaha Municipal Code, Chapter 36, Article 3, Division 6, by creating a new section prohibiting pedestrian use of certain medians within the public right-of-way, A is communications in opposition, B is documentation submitted by the Public Works Department.
Public hearing on item 26 was... Did who get moved to neutral? Okay. A?
As they're neutral. We have other communications included in the opposition, but the ACLU is neutral. They're included in there.
Okay, so there's some others in opposition, but the ACLU is neutral. Okay. Public hearing was held last week. Is there, are there no lights on? Is there a motion? Oh, there is? Oh, there's a bunch of lights. All right, guys. Mr. Festus.
Thanks, Mr. President. So there is, there was a motion to approve, and I'll second that, but I just wanted to follow up with a couple of comments and maybe a clarification from this morning. So as I discussed during the public hearing last week, I'm supportive of this measure for median safety. I think it's important. I do have the four busiest and most likely to have accidents intersections in my district, and that's reconfirmed by the list we got today. 72nd and Dodge, 90th and West Dodge, 72nd and Maple, and 102nd and West Maple, where this could potentially apply. And as I mentioned last week, and I think part of the interest in the ACLU's neutrality is I think they make some good points that I think we are in line with when we talk about limiting this ordinance to the truly dangerous intersections like the ones I just mentioned. I think we're doing that with how this is written. I also think in terms of enforcement, based on testimony last week from the deputy chief, that this will be enforced in a reasonable fashion for those that may be in the median, including verbal warnings and things of that nature, before there would just be, you know, citations being written and possibly for folks who couldn't afford to handle such citations. But I wanted to confirm that with Representative of the Police Department, if we have one here today. Looks like we do, just because that was a little bit unclear this morning in our pre-council meeting.
Good afternoon. Kathy Gonzalez, Omaha Police, 505 South 15th Street. And yes, I am here on behalf of Deputy Chief Davis, and she did want to reiterate that the police department is in support and favor of this ordinance. Ultimately, it can pose a safety hazard to not only the pedestrians that are on those medians, but also the people that are driving. And so, yes, we would, in fact, we have various opportunities to use this as a tool. So ultimately, we can recommend that the people move, and we can give them verbal warnings, and of course, then we can move forward from there as an arrest or check for warrants, et cetera. So, yes, that is correct.
Great, thank you. So that would be the approach in enforcement, in a reasonable fashion, only for those that might not be complying for the third or fourth time or what the, whatever the case may be.
Right, and obviously with the publicity of what's going forward from here, this will be educational component also.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
And then I think as we've all pointed out too, I think we can't lose sight of the third point there, which is this is not the only answer to the, to one of the situations we've seen in the medians. And I know we're all interested in addressing poverty on a wider scale in our community and through various fashions and with various partners. So with that, I'm satisfied with where we are today and we'll, I seconded the motion and we'll support it today.
Thank you. Mr. Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too will be in support of this, although I think it's just a first step. I wish it could be, it could be further reaching than it is. For example, I think a week ago when we were sitting in these chambers, we had an incident that actually occurred while we were in session at, at the exit ramp off of 4AD onto 30th Street at the Dodge Street exit. And that's, that according to the list that we have here from Public Works, is not in the top 100. But we had an incident where someone was in the median, was maybe under the influence of drugs or alcohol, was stumbling into traffic, and you know, it's, again, it's, it would not be on the radar for what we're passing today. I wish it were. But again, I think it's, it's a good first step. And then to address, you know, something that Mr. Festerson brought up too. I spoke with Candace Gregory last week about this issue, and I think it was reported in the paper that Stormy Dean from the CNN Francis House weighed in as well, as most of these people are not even homeless. So for the argument, or for those who make the argument that we're doing this to push a segment of our society aside so that they're out of sight is, is not in fact what we're doing. Again, I'll be supportive of this. I'm going to look at some other ways that maybe we can enhance it in the future and along the lines of those who say it's for, just for panhandling and not for public safety. I too will be addressing some of the, some additional restrictions that might be added to the aggressive panhandling ordinance that we already have on, on file. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Melton.
And I just wanted to reiterate with passing this today for the record that this was, this really is done for the safety of people who are on the medians and the safety of the drivers that we've heard that could get rear-ended, rear-end somebody else, you could have kids in the car. So this, this is about the safety of everyone in, in the city. I don't think we're addressing any one particular segment, I just, but I do think it is our job to protect those who may not know how to protect themselves, and, and that's, that's what we need to do today. And so that's why I'm very supportive of, of this, and I do think, I want to, I want to thank Ryan for his careful drafting of this, because I think having the ACLU actually come out with a neutral, non-support or, or against, you know, that says a lot. And I'm very happy with, with how this was, was worded. I understand that the end result may not be enough for, for some people, but we are limited by the Constitution and the rulings of the, of our, of our Supreme Court, even when we don't always like them. So I, I do think that this was a very good ordinance, and I do think that there is more that we can do, as I talked about last week, looking into what Albuquerque and I think Councilman Harding brought up, they're doing it in Portland. And that's what President Gray and I have talked about, is also, on a, on a separate note, for people who do feel that they don't have the opportunity to work for money and that maybe we give them that opportunity. We're doing that through Heartland Workforce Solutions, but maybe a more immediate need in Albuquerque where we have a van and we provide somebody the opportunity to just go and do, do a day's work in our parks and then, and then pay them for that work. And I, I really do think that's something that we should continue to look into and work on, and I know the mayor, the mayor agrees and is doing the same. So thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Jaram.
Yes, I've said that I was leaning towards supporting this, and as I've come down with it, the fact is, there are people who are on these medians, who are poor, they are marginalized, they are addicted, and they are, in some cases, people just kind of making a buck, that dress up as though they're marginalized. And one of them happened to be by my old office at 72nd and Pacific, who would come in a nice car parked by the Qdoba, and get in the costume and go out on the street and, and ask for money, and I think did pretty well, or he wouldn't have been there. But for me, it comes down to whether they're poor, whether they're marginalized, whether anything else, when you have a First Amendment issue, you have to be very careful that we not tread on the rights that people have. And the reason why I come down in favor of this ordinance is because it's so narrowly crafted to dangerous intersections where it truly is because of the narrowness and size of the, of the median, a very, very unsafe place to be. And so there's still the option to go to the side of the road in those cases. And so for those who might say, even with me who supports the rights to do this, why are you supporting this ordinance? It's because we're really not pushing anyone out of the, of the sight of exercising their free speech and us having the opportunity to see that, view it, if we choose to donate. So that's why I support this ordinance, and I would again remind people, as Candace Gregory says all the time, if you, if, the best thing to do if you think you're helping someone who is poor, who is marginalized, who is an addict, is to give to the cause, because they're, the nonprofits we have in Omaha, working in those areas are so very good at what they do and so much better equipped to really get at the root of the cause and address the problem, and hopefully come up with a solution. So I'll be voting for this, and for those who, who are saying that we're, we're doing the things that we've heard accused of in terms of picking on the poor, the marginalized, I don't see it that way in this case because of just how narrow this ordinance is. The last thing I would say is the time it's going to take to implement this because of sizing up where, what intersections qualify, which just happened, and that's available if anybody wants it on the website. It's going to have to be a complaint, as we've heard, and then there's going to be the evaluation, then there has to be signage made, signage posted. So to me, it's going to be something that's not going to be very quick in implementation. So on the total other end of the street, for the people who say this can't happen fast enough and get, get everyone off all the streets, don't think that you're going to see a big change so quickly because there's just not signs in stock, there's not signs ordered, there's not signs budgeted for, and there's no money that I'm aware of in the 2018 budget to pay for any of this. So if, unless some other money for other signs that's already been spoken for is, is reallocated, then you have to expect that it'll take some time to implement this. So with that, I'll be voting yes, and it's, it's only because of how narrow this is and how people still will be able to exercise their rights in other intersections on medians that are wider, that are bigger, that are safer, and off on the sides of the streets.
Thank you. Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, President Gray. I guess quickly, just to add to both sides, just a few things. I mean, I think we all understand that no ordinance is going to completely remove this problem that we have. It might lessen it. It may move these low-income Omahans that we see each and every day, whether it makes us comfortable or uncomfortable, just to another part of, maybe just that intersection. If we move them off this list of hazardous medians, they're not going to go away. And, and I'll tell you, I think the reason they're not going to go away is because we're not solving the actual problem at hand, which is unfortunate because there are many opportunities for them to make a better life for themselves. But I guess the good and bad part of Omaha being such a gracious city is that we make it convenient for these individuals to, to make money, unfortunately, enough to, to live. So I am really stuck on it. It's, and I guess another part of that is I'm still going to see them on my daily commute, even this past weekend, and I can pull up different parts of the city that I frequented, and this will not stop them from being there. So as Councilman Jaram said, either way, regardless of how this goes, and it looks like it will be supported, I hope that our police department does not spend their whole entire day based off complaints, because there's going to have to be a sign, first of all, which we were told would roughly be about $1,000 each, and then it's going to be complaint-driven. I hope they don't spend their whole entire day driving around, ultimately giving a ticket to somebody who can't afford that ticket anyway. So it's not solving the problem. We all know there's a problem. If I had a magic wand, I think each and every one of us in this room would make the problem go away. And I guess the third and last thing is, is like I said, like it or not, if it makes you uncomfortable or not, this, this is their constitutional right to do this, they're protected to do it. I know we're going, I know we have something drafted and it's on spot, and I appreciate all the work that went into that, and it, it may protect us, and I say it may, because even though the ACLU is neutral at this point, they're not going to go away. They're going to keep a watchful eye on it, and it does set us up as a city to, just for down-the-road problems. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no more lights. I guess a couple of things that I will, that I will just add to that. First of all, I, I like to thank Ryan as well for the, the kind of work, the work that he did in putting this ordinance together. Ms. Melton, I think you deserve some credit as well for being involved in this and, and doing a lot of the work, a lot of the groundwork to help get to this point. So I think congratulations and thanks ought to go to you as well for the effort. And it has been, and I know it's a difficult issue, and, and there's no way, and Councilmember Palermo is right, we, and Councilmember Jaram are both right, we, we really have to get at what the real serious problem is. Ms. Melton and I went out one evening, and we were out quite a long time to really get a good look at how, how difficult and how serious the homeless problem really is, and wow, this is not that. And we have been told by those, especially those that we were working with at night, that a lot of people that you see on these corners are not individuals who are down and out as much as they are people who, this is their job every day. But we do have to get to the real serious problem of homelessness, and, and there are some efforts to work on that. I can, I can promise people that we're working diligently to try and get that resolved and look at some other possibilities as well, like when we talked about the van, but we really have to address that issue. But I think this, as Councilmember Braker Harding said, this, this is a good first step, and I intend to support it as well. And it's been moved and seconded to approve, and there are no further lights, and I guess we roll call.
And I'll apologize, we didn't capture who made the original motion.
Ms. Melton made the original motion.
Okay, thank you. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jaram. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President. Item 26 is approved, six to one. Item 27, a resolution to approve the Bijou Residences Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 563 South 18th Street in an amount up to $250,000.
Public hearing on agenda item number 27 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Bridget Hadley, City Planning. The Bijou Residences TIF Redevelopment Project Plan is a precursor of a proposed larger redevelopment project that is in, in process of being thought of for the Flatiron District. So the project before you today is the Bijou Residences, which is right here, shaded in blue. This is Eighteenth Street. This is Jackson Street. And the larger potential redevelopment project area proposes to redevelop several properties within this district that surrounds the Flatiron District, which is right here, that particular building. Going back to the Bijou, TIF project itself, it proposes to restore and rehabilitate this particular three-story structure. It's called or often known as the Freedon Building, Freedon Building, and it had at one time the Freedon Supret Grocery Store there and a cigar store there as well, and then apartments up above. The, again, project proposes to totally renovate this. There were some code violations, so the TIF project will allow for those code violations to be completely removed, the building to be totally restored, renovated, and the use is brought back. And again, it would be their precursor to a potential redevelopment project that would also envisions a master plan for public infrastructure improvements, which those are still being discussed with the city staff. So the project plan proposes up to $250,000 in TIF. The actual amount of the note, which you'll see, which will come back to you as a redevelopment agreement, will be for $246,757, which is what the project actually can support. And then the investment of this project is two hundred, or excuse me, $2.38 million. I know the development team or representatives of the ownership are here. If you should have any specific questions, with that, I'd ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Moving seconded to approve item twenty-seven, there are no more lights. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty-seven is approved, seven to zero. Item twenty-eight, a resolution to approve two separate projects, the Baxter Arena Redevelopment Project Plan located at 2425 South Sixty-seventh Street for the issuance of redevelopment bonds to pay the city's obligation for public infrastructure improvements installed when the arena was constructed, and the allocation of tax increment financing for the Center Aloft Project located at 6201 and 6221 Center Street in the amount up to $2,125,000.
Public hearing on agenda item number twenty-eight is today. Proponents, please.
Bridget Hadley, City Planning. As read before you, this is a redevelopment project plan area that does include two projects, the issuance of redevelopment bonds for the Baxter Arena, which was already constructed. However, as I know you all are aware, the CIP did approve the city to pay general obligation bonds to pay back or pay for infrastructure improvements that were made around Sixty-second, Sixty-seventh and Center Street, Sixty-fourth Avenue and Center, extension of the Arbor Street, and some other public improvements. Including this particular, the issuance of the bonds in this redevelopment project plan allows for the city to issue redevelopment bonds instead of using general obligation bonds. The actual TIF project is for the hotel site, which would be here, it's kind of hash-marked at Sixty-seventh and Center Street. And that particular project proposes to totally redevelop that site that has two separate sites that will be replanted into one site for a five-story, 110-room aloft hotel. Currently, right now, the site has structures there that are, and it also includes some vacant lots, underutilized lots. So this will be a much-needed improvement as this area has been redeveloping. There will also be 120 parking spaces. So this is a rendering, an initial preliminary rendering of the aloft, and then this is the site plan. So this is Center Street, this is Sixty-third Street, and then the parking, about 120 parking spaces surrounding the actual proposed aloft hotel. The project would involve just about $2,125,000 in TIF, and the investment is just over 15 million at this particular site. I know the redevelopment team is here. Should you have any specific questions, with that, I would ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Jaram.
Yes, if I could have Mr. Hughes come on up. If you could leave the map up after he's introduced, I guess, maybe put it up.
Hi, John Hughes, Magnum Development Corp., 11550 I Street, Omaha 68137.
First, Mr. Hughes, I want to thank you for you and your partner, Mr. Carter, and your team for the work you've done in the village, now the South Village, as I call it, proceeding to the East.
Thanks for calling at that.
And what we originally envisioned when we extended the CRA, the reinvestment redevelopment area south of Center and built the new Arbor Street, was that what was happening in Exarbit Village could in fact be expanded to the South and to the East in an area that, in many cases, was pretty rough. And the opportunities for redevelopment in that quarter abound, and this piece of the puzzle that you're doing here with this hotel, I think, opens that up in a substantial way. What had been proposed there in terms of a gas station probably, I think, as you would agree, would have probably put the eastward redevelopment path in jeopardy. So when someone comes into an area that had been, there's Quonset Huts there now and the old convenience store gas station that was then a credit union, which was then a convenience store, and puts $15 million into that for a new brand of hotel, you're to be commended and thanked publicly for that, and that's why I want to bring you up here to do, so.
Well, I appreciate that. It's a team effort. The team includes CFM Realty and Lincoln Hotel Group, along with Magnum, and we're looking forward to getting started.
Thank you.
Motion approved. Moving seconded to approve item twenty-eight, there are no further lights. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty-eight is approved, seven to zero. Item twenty-nine, an ordinance to extend a contract by two years from January 1, 2018 through December 31, 2019, with DPS Construction LLC for the transportation of Sledge Cake Project from the Missouri River and Papillion Creek Wastewater Treatment Plants in the amount of $863,050.
Public hearing on agenda item number twenty-nine is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item thirty, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of a purchase order to Interstate Power Systems for a price agreement for predictive preventative maintenance services and inspection, maintenance and repair of plant engines and related equipment at the Missouri River Wastewater Treatment Plant and Papillion Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant in the amount of $538,900.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item thirty-one, an ordinance to approve the execution of a master fiber IRU conveyance and conduit sharing agreement with Exonet Systems, Inc., for the usage of city right-of-way and conduit for optical fiber communication lines and for the city's use of such communication lines.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-one is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. President and council members. My name is Larry Washington. My business address is 3030 Warrenville Road, Suite 340, Lisle, Illinois. I'm here today to request support of this agenda item and also to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Don't see any questions? Thank you. Next item.
Item thirty-two, an ordinance to approve the execution of a master agreement for attachments in public right-of-way with Exonet Systems, Inc., to construct, install, operate, modify, replace, and maintain a microcell network consisting of an attachment upon street light poles within certain public rightsway.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-two is today. Proponents, please. Welcome back.
Welcome. Thank you. Again, my name is Larry Washington. My business address is 3030 Warrenville Road, Suite 340, Lisle, Illinois, and I'm here again to support this item and answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Next item.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Item thirty-three, an ordinance vacating a portion of the 132nd Street right-of-way abutting parcel, commonly known as 333 South 132nd Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-three is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item thirty-four, an ordinance approving a redevelopment and tax increment financing loan agreement with Sorensen Heights LLC to implement the Sorensen Heights Senior Housing Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 6657 North 56th Street in an amount up to $500,000.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-four is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, I'm Don Seaton with the Omaha City Planning Department, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Public hearing is closed. I would like to take the opportunity, though, to thank Rob, Rob, for the work that you're doing over in that area. It is a much-needed project. We can't build enough affordable housing, I don't think, especially for seniors, so I do want, I did want to take the opportunity to thank you for the development and thank you for the work that you're doing over there. Next item.
Item thirty-five, an ordinance approving a redevelopment and tax increment financing loan agreement with Lawnfield LLC to implement the Center Line Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 7001 Oak Street in an amount up to $2,941,000.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-five is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, again, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning, and available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item thirty-six, a special ordinance levying a special assessment for fines and civil penalties on certain lots in the City of Omaha, group number 2017-01.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-six is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? I'm sorry. Proponent?
Opponent.
Opponent. Name an address for the record, please.
Brittany Swate, I'm representative for Chronicles Properties, 3322 South 78th Street.
Thank you.
I have a packet. Can I?
Give it to your clerk, please. Thank you.
I'm here to ask the council to amend the ordinance to remove the assessment against our property located at 10305 N Street because communications were repeatedly sent to an address not in use by the Register of Deeds or assessor. As a result, it caused delays in bringing our property into compliance and preventing us from making this appeal at the Board of Equalization. I have copies of the documents showing the improper address used, as well as an envelope showing that the Board of Equalization notice wasn't even set for forwarding to us until three days before the hearing. I have included the printout from the Register of Deeds showing that our correct address has been in their system since at least November 22 of 2016, which is the last date of change on record for this property. Lastly, I have included the notice of violation that was originally sent out to the previous owner. Please note, we have never received an actual notice of violation until the time we received the lien notice, since it was only ever sent out to the bank, as shown in my last statement. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Question for you. Hold on before you go. Question. Mr. Jaram.
Yes. What was your name again?
Brittany Swate.
Brittany Swate. Ms. Swate, the property address on the packet that you provided, curious, you said, I believe, that you did not get notice of the hearing for the Board of Equalization because this was the address used, correct?
Correct. We received it after, the day after the actual hearing.
Now, in terms of another case, was this property involved in a property maintenance appeal board hearing the week before the Board of Equalization hearing?
Yes.
In this building?
Yes.
Okay. Up on sixth or seventh floor?
Yeah.
Okay. What was the address that the city used to notify this property of its rights in terms of that property maintenance issue and the citation on that one?
I believe it was our old address.
So my question is, if that address that the city used on that case reached this property owner, and that property owner, given that notice at that address, which is the same one here, knew of its rights to go to the Property Maintenance Appeal Board, then it seems a little odd to me that they could claim here, in this case, on the Board of IC, that they didn't get notice when it was the same address used as the one they did get notice on. So how do you respond to that?
Our maintenance manager has actually been working closely with the code violation gentleman, and they had an appointment set for the day before the actual hearing. So I don't know, this is the only one that I'm kind of in charge of because we haven't gotten any notifications. I just know he's been working closely with the code violation gentleman, so I don't know if that's how he found out or not.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
Item thirty-seven, an ordinance approving a real estate purchase agreement with Ronald Grun, 4721 North 17th Street, to convey the property located at 4717 North 17th Street in the amount of $836.91.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-seven is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item thirty-eight, an ordinance approving a redevelopment and tax increment financing loan agreement with 3817 Dewey LLC to implement the West Farnham Apartments Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 3817 Dewey Avenue in an amount up to $340,000.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-eight is today. Proponents, please.
Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. If you have any questions on this TIF agreement, I'm available.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item thirty-nine, an ordinance to accept the bid of Sandri Fire Supply LLC to provide various fire hoses for the Omaha Fire Department in the total amount of $34,537.50.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-nine is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item forty, an ordinance to accept the fiscal year 2016 Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program Fire Prevention and Safety Award with the total program budget in the amount of $199,100 during the project period of August 11, 2017, to August 10, 2019, to provide funding for one full-time community fire safety education specialist position focused on North Omaha, smoke and carbon monoxide tamper-resistant detectors, and promotional materials for the Omaha Fire Department's Public Education Division.
Public hearing on agenda item number forty is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item forty-one, an ordinance to amend Section 23-232 of the Omaha Municipal Code, referral of eligible to modify the process for promotional appointments in the sworn police and fire service to make clear the applicants can be disqualified for promotions for police and fire chief but not for other sworn positions.
Public hearing on agenda item number forty-one is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Non-action items, items forty-two through seventy-four, do not require a public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on the agenda for consideration.
Thank you. Is there a motion adjourned?
I'll make one comment. Although he just left the chambers. Murthy Cody has been sitting in here, and I was going to call him back up. Is he still here?
He's left.
He's moving in a week, and he has been our traffic engineer for how many years? Well before I came here, and I really just wanted to wish him well as he moves on because he's done a lot for the City of Omaha. He's taken a lot of heat for a lot of us in trying to explain things even to our constituents, but he's also educated me quite a bit on safety and traffic engineering in the City of Omaha. So I really just wanted to call attention and thank him because he's leaving next week, I believe, in the next two weeks before our next council meeting.
We'll catch him some kind of way.
We'll catch him.
Thank you. Is there a motion adjourned?
I think there was one.
Was there a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn now.
Moving seconded to adjourn, or lights? Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Meeting adjourned at 2:49 PM.